It is now six o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education Work Session to order. Tonight, I would like to begin with a moment of silence for three of our RCPS family members we have lost recently, specifically remembering Justin Attin, a senior at Salem High School, Cameron Macklin, a senior at Open Campus Heritage High School, and Delano Martin Jr., a freshman at Salem High School. We send our condolences to their family and friends, and ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers in days, weeks, months, and years to come. Do I hear motion to approve? Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Do I hear motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved Janie Jones.
Second Akeeta Palmer.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Akeeta Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved 6-0. Tonight, I am thrilled that the board has the chance to celebrate our wonderful staff members who graduated from Rockdale County Public Schools. It's heartwarming to see them return and make a positive impact in various schools that shape their futures. After the presentation, we'll take a five-minute break to congratulate our alumnis, board, and Ms. Chesser. Please join me at the front.
We're going to do them, we've got 10 groups, so we're going to do them one at a time. Okay. Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, board members, Superintendent Chesser, and all of our guests. We're excited you're here. Thank you to our board chairwoman for her great idea this evening. We are celebrating an extraordinary group of individuals who have come full circle, returning to the very school system that shaped them to make a difference for the next generation. These hometown heroes embody the values of commitment, pride, and heart, proving that greatness begins at home. As Nelson Mandela once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." You, our hometown heroes, are wielding that weapon with compassion and determination, inspiring young minds, and instilling hope and purpose in the community that nurtured you. We are incredibly grateful for your service and your dedication. Your journey is a testament to the power of giving back and making a lasting impact in the place you hold dearest. Thank you for being champions of education and beacons of inspiration. Your commitment reminds us all that the foundation of a thriving community begins within its own walls. We are recognizing 237 employees who graduated from one of our RCPS schools. For the sake of time, I will not call all the names of those who I know could not be here with us this evening, but if you look at the screens, you will see everyone listed with the school they graduated from, the year they graduated, and their current workplace in our system. Everyone will receive a Hometown Hero certificate and a pin for their ID badge lane yard that says RCPS alum. We like our pins, don't we? We will bring our honorees up in groups according to the year they graduated high school. We will take a photo. All right, listen up, because you've got to pay attention. These are the instructions. We will take a photo after each group. Now, there will be several classes together, because otherwise we'd be here until midnight, but we'll take a photo after each group, and we will post all the photos on social media for everyone to access. Again, we thank our board chair, Jackson Lett, for her idea to bring this group together, and we thank our honorees for their service and for coming this evening so that we can show our appreciation. I know it can be a little crowded in here, so feel free to exit if you need to quietly after your group if you choose. We welcome you all to stay. With that, we will begin with our employee alumni who graduated in the 1970s. Now, again, all the names are on the screen, so I'm going to call only those who I believe are here, and I think that we may have some that haven't shown up, and I'm just not aware, but I will call those, I will not call those that I know are not with us. First, graduating in 1971 from Rockdale County High School, currently working at Salem High School, Patricia Rogers. So I know y'all were so excited about hearing about the pin, so I'm going to say it again. Come on up, and then stay up front. So Ms. Rogers, you're going to stay up front until we get everyone from the '70s, and then we'll do a group photo. Okay, graduating in 1976 from Rockdale County High School, now working at Shoal Creek Elementary, Cynthia Glass. All right, I'm just going to say that everyone in the '70s graduated Rockdale County High School. So now that we know that, graduating 1976, working in transportation, Diane Thorpe. Graduating in 1977, working at High Tower Trail Elementary, Patricia German. A 1978 graduate, now working in transportation, Paige Beam. Also a 1978 graduate, now working in Barksdale Elementary, Brenda Macklin. A 1978 graduate, now working in transportation, Kenneth Zanders. Graduating 1979, working at Conyers Middle School, Virgil Baker. And rounding out our group from the 1970s, graduating in 1979, now at Barksdale Elementary, Sandy Watkins. All right, this is going to be 80 to 85. 80 to 85 is next. Okay, graduating in 1980 from Heritage High School, now working at Lorraine Elementary, Allison Dunlop. A 1980 graduate from Rockdale County High School, working in transportation, Terry Key. Also a 1980 graduate from Heritage High School, working at Rockdale County High School, Catherine Garrett. A 1980 graduate from Rockdale County High School, now working in transportation, Cindy Jones. A 1980 graduate from Heritage High School, working in transportation, Marsha McCart. A 1981 graduate of Rockdale County High School, working at JH House, Lisa Gregor. Our very own board chair is a graduate from Heritage High School in 1982, now our board chair, Sandra Jackson Lett. A 1983 graduate of Heritage High School, now at the Rockdale Career Academy, Elizabeth Williams Trow. A 1984 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at Sims Elementary, Tracy Forrester. Another 1984 graduate from Rockdale County High School, now at Honey Creek Elementary, Denise Martin. 1984 graduate from Heritage High School, now at Lorraine Elementary, Danine Schubert. A 1985 graduate from Heritage High School, now at the Rockdale Magnet School, Stephanie Bradford. Joining her classmate from 1985 at Heritage High School, also at the Magnet School, Beth Dyer. Rounding out our 1985 group, graduating Rockdale County High School and still at Rockdale County High School, Don Swainy. Help everyone smile.
Pretty reunion, there you go.
Hey, all right.
All right, 86 to 89. Okay, so this is the 86 to 89 group of graduates. All right, starting out with a graduate from 1986 from Rockdale County High School, now at Pine Street Elementary, Beth Duran. Also a 1986 graduate of Rockdale County High School, still at Rockdale County High School, Danine Moss. Also a 1986 graduate from Heritage High School, now at JH House Elementary, Brenda Wheeler. A 1987 graduate from Rockdale County High School, still at Rockdale County High School, Nancy Cronin. A 1987 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Barksdale Elementary, Kelly Keaton. A 1987 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at the Rockdale Career Academy, Jennifer Kinsey. A 1987 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Lorraine Elementary, Carrie Moon. A 1987 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now in our Human Resources Department, Keisha Mumford. A 1987 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Peeks Chapel Elementary, Kristin Slotnick. A 1988 graduate of Heritage High School, now at High Tower Trail Elementary, Holly Foster. A 1988 graduate from Heritage High School, now at Pine Street Elementary, Candace Frazier. A 1988 graduate of Heritage High School, now at the Rockdale Magnet School, who is also a state top 10 finalist for Teacher of the Year, Charles Garner. A 1988 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at the Rockdale Career Academy, Jason Miller. A 1988 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Pine Street Elementary, Nan Riley. A 1989 graduate from Rockdale County High School, now in our Business Services Department, Angie Horn. All right, rounding out, our 1989 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at the Rockdale Career Academy, Samantha Swainy.
All right, we got it, we got it, we got it. All right, everyone looking over here.
Big smile. All right, now, everybody's putting their pin on their lane yard, right? I want to see them. Okay, our next group, listen up, our next group is going to be 1990 all the way through 1997, okay? 1990 through 97. I tried to balance these groups a little bit, not necessarily by year, but by numbers of people, so that's why it's a little off. 1990 to 97. All right, we have a 1990 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Lorraine Elementary, Amy Mayo. Graduating in 1991 from Heritage High School, now at Honey Creek Elementary, Liza Rowan. Graduating in 1991 from Rockdale County High School, now principal of Lorraine Elementary, Kim Veer. Graduating in 1992 from Rockdale County High School, now at CJ Hicks Elementary School, Tandy Kason. Graduating in 1992 from Rockdale County High School, now the leader of our Community and Student Support Department, April Fallon. Graduating in 1992, also from Rockdale County High School, now working in our Maintenance Department, Michael Thomas. Graduating 1993 from Rockdale County High School, still at Rockdale County High School, Felicia Jackson. Graduating 1993 from Rockdale County High School, now at Pine Street Elementary School, Kristy King. Graduating in 1993 from Heritage High School, now at CJ Hicks Elementary, Sharika Stanford. Graduating in 1995 from Rockdale County High School, now at Salem High School, Darren Kilby. Graduating 1995 from Heritage High School, now at the Early Learning Center, Amy Lofton Owens. Graduating in 1995 from Salem High School, now our Assistant Superintendent of Academic Programs, Shawna Miller. Graduating in 1995 from Rockdale County High School, now at the Epic Center and Open Campus, Manimo Robinson. Graduating 1995 from Heritage High School, in our Learning Support Department, Mike Swards. Graduating in 1995 from Heritage High School, now at the Early Learning Center, Brandy Webb. Graduating in 1997 from Rockdale County High School, now at Pine Street Elementary, Heather Blair. Graduating in 1997 from Salem High School, now our General Counsel for the Systems, Santana Flanagan. All right, quiet in the house, there are people trying to listen, there are people watching online. All right, graduating from Salem High School, also, oh, with Santana, 1997, Salem High School, now at Edwards Middle School, Dana Franklin. Graduating 1997 from Rockdale County High School, now at Flat Shoals Elementary, Shawana Muse Roberts. All right, rounding out our 1990 to 97 group, graduating in 97 from Rockdale County High School, now at Barksdale Elementary School, Miranda Peck. All right, so we are going to backtrack just a little bit, because somehow, we missed somebody in the class of 1986, so I'm going to apologize. I don't know how we did that, but we are going to bring this person up with this group. We will get a certificate to Jada, and again, apologize, Jada graduated 1986 from Rockdale County High School. Now in transportation, Jada Henderson. So Jada, stay up here, because we're going to take your picture with this next group. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna have Jada, 1986, and then the 1998 to 2004 group. How about that? Okay, graduating in 1998 from Salem High School, now at JH House Elementary School, Erica Crawford-Watchington. Graduating also 1998 from Salem High School at Pine Street Elementary, Nancy Lumpkin. Graduating 1998 from Rockdale County High School, now at Heritage High School, John White. Graduating 1999 from Rockdale County High School, now at Lorraine Elementary School, Sarah Hill. Also graduating 1999 from Rockdale County High School, now at Edwards Middle School, Rashonda Levitt Tompkins. Graduating in the year 2000. From Salem High School, now at Edwards Middle School, Tammy Randall. Graduating 2001 from Rockdale County High School, now at Memorial Middle School, Natasha Johnson. Also graduating 2001 from Rockdale County High School, now in our Technology Department, Nicole Kirby. Graduating 2001 from Salem High School, now at Barksdale Elementary, Patrick Randall. Graduating 2001 from Heritage High School, now at Edwards Middle School, Jessica Wingo. Graduating 2002 from Rockdale County High School, now in our Student Registration Department, Felicia Anderson. Graduating from Rockdale County High School in 2002, now at Rockdale County High School, Tashika Ford. Graduating Rockdale County High School in 2002, our very own Board Member, Justin Kenny. Graduating Salem in 2002, now at the Early Learning Center, Crystal Smith. Graduating in 2000... Okay, I'm gonna keep going. In 2003, graduating from Salem High School, now at CJ Hicks Elementary School, Jessica Meditz. Graduating in 2004 from the Rockdale Magnet School, now leading the Rockdale Magnet School, Amanda Basket. Graduating 2004 from Rockdale County High School, now at Sims Elementary, Venisha Hawk. Also graduating Rockdale County High School in 2004, now at the Rockdale Career Academy, Turnisha Webb. And that is our 98 to 04 and our bonus 1986 group. 7th group, 2005 to 2007. Graduating 2005 from Rockdale County High School, now at Rockdale County High School, Monique Barrett. Graduating 2005 from Heritage High School, now at JH House Elementary, Coleman Dixon. Graduating 2005 from Rockdale County High School, now at Pine Street Elementary, Stacy Homer. Graduating 2005 from Salem High School, now at Flat Shoals Elementary, Lataria McKnight. Graduating 2006 from Rockdale County High School, now at CJ Hicks Elementary, Ashley Blackford. Graduating 2006 from Heritage High School, now at Rockdale County High School, Kibwe Brown. Graduating in '06 from Salem High School, now in our Learning Support Department, Andrew Oldham. Graduating in 2006 from Salem High School, now at Heritage High School, Ashley Shai. Graduating 2007 from Heritage High School, now at Barksdale Elementary, Casey Gilliam. Graduating '07 from Heritage High School, now at Lorraine Elementary, Martika Postel. Graduating '07 from Rockdale County High School, now at Hightower Trail Elementary, Corey Powers. And rounding out our '07 graduates from Heritage High School, now at Lorraine Elementary, Carrie Vissering. Okay, this is our 2008 to 2010 group. Was there an "aw"? Aw. Okay, 2008 from... Am I wrong? I don't think so. Okay. Alright, graduating in 2008 from Heritage High School, now at JH House Elementary, Nicholas Bailey. Also a 2008 graduate of Heritage High School, now at the Early Learning Center, Sanwanna Castillo Garcia. Graduating '08 from Rockdale County High School, now at CJ Hicks Elementary, Kimberly Ayacapella. Graduating in '08 from Salem High School, and still at Salem High School, Lauren Moore. Graduating also in the class of '08 from Salem High School, now at General Ray Davis Middle, Kristen Motley. Graduating in 2008 from Rockdale County High School, now at Flat Shoals Elementary, Victoria Maury. Graduating in '09 from Heritage High School, now at Sims Elementary, Maria Medley. A 2009 graduate from Salem High School, now in our Technology Department, Christine Olmsted. A 2009 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at Hightower Trail Elementary, Seronica Williams. An '09 graduate of Salem High School, now at Sims Elementary, Devon Mims. A 2010 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Salem High School, Bianca Brown. Graduating 2010 from Rockdale County High School, now at JH House Elementary, Teri Cadina. A 2010 graduate of Salem High School, now at JH House Elementary, Dewan Croomes. A 2010 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at Honey Creek Elementary School, Catherine Grant. A 2010 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at Hightower Trail Elementary, Laura Lakes. A 2010 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Sims Elementary, Charles LaMondo. A 2010 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now the Athletic Director at Heritage High School, Dorian Powell-Harris. A 2010 graduate of Rockdale County High School, now at DL Sims Elementary, Araina Smiley. Rounding out our 2010 graduate group from Heritage High School, now at Edwards Middle School, Kayla Turner. Now, one of our wonderful chefs at Rockdale Career Academy, Rhiana Bray. Graduating 2011 from Rockdale County High School, now at Memorial Middle School, Delvin Denham. A 2011 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Memorial Middle, Lindsay Ezel. Graduating Salem High School in 2011, now at Conyers Middle School, Jaylen Gilstrap. A 2011 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Shoal Creek Elementary, Janetta Goolsbee. Graduating Salem High School in 2011, now at Flat Shoals Elementary School, Rachel Hill. Graduating Rockdale County High School in 2011, now at the Rockdale Career Academy, another wonderful chef, Melody Homer. Graduating 2011 from Heritage High School, now at Pine Street Elementary, Katie Sanders. Graduating from Salem High School in 2011, now at Flat Shoals Elementary, Sierra Skipper. Graduating in 2012 from Salem High School, now in our Transportation Department, Kara Bassett. Graduating 2012 from Heritage High School, now at Barksdale Elementary, Taryn Johnson. Graduating 2012 from Heritage High School, now at General Ray Davis Middle School, David Miller. Graduating 2012 from Salem High School, now at Memorial Middle, Chedarius Robinson. Graduating 2013 from Heritage High School, now at Rockdale County High School, Jessica Raggsdale. Graduating Rockdale Magnet School in 2013, now in our Technology Department, Caitlin Silva. Graduating 2013 from Heritage High School, still at Heritage High School, Adriana Tunian. Graduating 2013 from Heritage High School, now at Pine Street Elementary School, Chelsea Veal. Graduating 2014 from our Rockdale Magnet School, now in our Technology Department, Preston Houli. Rounding out this group with our final 2014 graduate from Rockdale County High School, now at Pine Street Elementary, Celeste Lopez-Mendez. Two, one. Piles, everyone, piles. One, two. Okay. 2015 to 2017. Okay, 2015 to 2017. Graduating 2015 from Rockdale County High School, now at Peaks Chapel Elementary, Jasmine Alvarado. 2015 graduate of Heritage High School, now at Salem High School, Tiara Andrews.
Just a public service message regarding Rockdale County Soil and Water District is a unit of the state government that directs natural resource management programs throughout Rockdale County. The district works with urban agriculture, farmers, landowners, and other units of government and partners to educate, support, and promote programs and practices that protect and enhance our natural resources. So based upon that, I believe Ms. Shirley, you have sent out a nice little communicate to everyone, and I've got extra copies here. Next Thursday, prior to your board meeting at 5:00, the Rockdale Soil and Water Conservation District will be hosting an ice cream and cookie social. Reasoning is many folks across the state and also Rockdale County do not know what the soil and water districts do to promote and protect our environment. And also, many residents do not know what the county extension service offers regarding all of their activities, which includes many of the students here in Rockdale County school system, specifically 4-H students. Mike Worley, the Georgia Wildlife Federation Director, will be our guest speaker at 6:30. So I know that some of y'all are going to have to come over at 5:00 and enjoy a cup of coffee or cold water and some ice cream and cookies so you can be informed on everything we do. Smokey Bear from the Georgia Forestry Commission will be on hand along with Drippy and Dripette from the Rockdale Water Resources Department to learn about the environmental initiatives, water and soil, and regenerative production of our land. So if you want to get a photo op, or your children would like to come and get a photo op with Smokey Bear, and again, it is not Smokey the Bear, it is Smokey Bear. So I have been corrected on that before. And also sharing environmental information there will be villagehabitat.com, FarmerD. There'll be a lifestyles training group that I know that y'all will be interested in, the Georgia Forestry Commission, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, Georgia Association of Conservation Districts, Department of Natural Resources, Artisan Village, Rockdale Fire and Rescue, along with EMA 911, Snapping Soles EMC, Science for Georgia, UGA, and Rockdale County Extension Service folks and 4-Hers, and the Upper Opemongee Basin Area Council, and the Rockdale Master Gardener. So come out and join us, have some fun. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. George Kellache. Next, we will have Mr. Stephen Henry.
Yes, Superintendent, and Board, and Rockdale citizens, staff, and also, well, he's outside, the Deputy Sheriff. I'm just here tonight to say thank you for opting into HB 581, and I want to say thank you to all those who voted for, those who voted against. It was all an effort, and you know, people had their opinions and so on and so forth. And that's all I was just here, just to say thank you, and that I feel a lot better remaining in the county of Rockdale. And that's pretty much just about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Next, I would like to call Ms. Nakisha Wade.
Hello. I came this evening because I wanted to raise concern. I have sent emails out to the principal, staff, and administration regarding this issue that occurred at Honey Creek on Tuesday. My kids came home from school and told me that there was white-only and colored-only signs above the water fountains and in the cafeteria. That is a highly concerning issue for myself and other parents as well, and I'm here to speak on behalf of those parents also. We have questions in regards to, well, I was told that it was a lesson plan. That is highly offensive, the way that it was delivered. I understand there's an investigation in place, and I hope and pray that that is taken in high regard to what the children experienced, because the kids are traumatized, especially speaking firsthand mind work. It's sad that in 2025, we have to encounter things of this nature. If it was in the investigation, I hope that you will look to find who approved this curriculum, if the curriculum and lesson plan was approved, why in that manner was it allowed to be presented that way? Also, I was shamed on the Nextdoor app by an administrator's husband for bringing this concern forth to the community, and I found that very highly unprofessional on behalf of that as well. I think we as citizens have the right to be informed about our children and what's happening in the public school system. As of today, we have yet to receive proper notification from the school system in regards to the issue, just saying in general, this occurred and we are looking into it. We haven't gotten that. And I think that if a spouse is able to be inclined to that information, surely we should be inclined to that information as parents regarding our children as well. That also allows us opportunities to have conversations with them, get them some counseling if needed, as I have reached out, because this can be detrimental to their confidence, their self-worth when you see something that says colored only. My son was above that, one of those who was at the water fountain, and he looked up and all the kids was laughing because it said whites only. That should not be happening today. And my child, who is seven years old, experienced this. She was walking to school, and in the cafeteria, she's like, why was there whites only in my cafeteria, Mommy? I have to explain this to my children, and I had to tell my dad it happened, and he's like, this is ridiculous. I went through, he lived through it, never in a million years did he think his grandchildren would have to. So again, I hope you take this in high consideration and really look into it deeply. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade, for your comments. Now, Ms. Avi Gaden.
How are you? It's always good to see you again. In support, you know, on Nextdoor, a lot of times, this is the platform that we use to try to stay in touch with what's going on in the community. Some of it's good, some of it's not so good, some of it's true, some of it's not true, and we have to determine what it is. So I did call Honey Creek Elementary to find out if there was any truth to what this mom experienced, and it does trigger past experiences, and it's traumatizing. And so we're just asking if the school board can send a message throughout the school system that this is not acceptable, or put some parameters around this. I'm not sure what happened, but I know it created a lot of conversation, and a lot of people wanted to blow it off as a prank when they had no information. So there's this insensitivity brewing in this county that is saying that white-only, black-only water signs is a prank. It's not a prank, and we want everyone in this county to understand that we do not consider it a prank. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Cabinet's update. Ms. Chesser, please introduce your cabinet and provide updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members to our cabinet and our audience, those in attendance tonight. Tonight, we will have four presentations, beginning first with the Office of Leadership and Learning, Dr. Denise Richardson and Ms. Renata Rowland. They will be followed by Mr. Buden Sieg from the Operations Department, and then Ms. Joyce Lynn Smith, our CFO, will give our financial update concluded by remarks from me. So, Dr. Richardson, if you're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, esteemed Board Members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet Members, and value community members. On behalf of the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, I stand before you to present a series of action items on behalf of our team. Joining me this evening are members of our curriculum team, and I'll name them, the members that are with me tonight. Heather Tolliver, our Science Health and PE Curriculum Coordinator, Vernalisa Printup, our Social Studies Coordinator, Dr. Masharonda McCray, our Secondary Language and Literacy Coordinator, Shanita Russell, our Middle Grades Literacy and Language Coordinator, and Charlene McLaughlin, our Elementary Literacy and Language Coordinator. Each member of our team will speak to specific action items for the program that they oversee. We're bringing before you a total of 20 curriculum-related items for consideration. This includes items for renewal of products that are currently in use in our district. In addition, you'll see two action items tied to our Health and PE curriculum, specifically addressing the sex education component. While the broader curriculum has already been in place for our district, we are formally presenting our sex education component for adoption as our district's official resource. On this slide, you will see six individual items listed under science. While the items appear separately, I want to clarify that they are all part of one single contract and agreement. We chose to list them individually to be fully transparent, so you can review each title individually. These science materials are being renewed for one year only, as we plan to engage in a comprehensive science adoption review for the upcoming school year. In addition, we're asking for the renewal of our Star Universal Screener for reading and math. The three items listed here include new purchases for our ELA Language Arts Program that are aligned to the new standards. The My Perspective resource will serve as the new core instructional resource, and the BFW resource is specifically designed for advanced placement courses. I will note that although the My Perspective is listed as a new resource, we're currently using SAV as My Perspective right now. It's just part of our current review and adoption process. Now, return on investment. Now, that's something I have heard the last few years over and over again, and again, I will say, in alignment with the Board's guidance, our team approached this year's work through a zero-based budget lens, prioritizing instructional investment that was strategic and essential. I'm going to quote Lisa McMillan, when I entered a meeting with her recently, she said that the curriculum and instruction team took this process very seriously, and we did. We developed key criteria to evaluate all of our resources, specifically identifying, while I asked the team to provide me with authentic evidence to show instructional need, student impact, and budget alignment. In addition, the team was asked to ensure that we're not duplicating existing resources, and the supplemental resources were in place to extend but not replace our core instructional resources. In my most recent meeting with building leaders, I reminded them of our 2019 Accreditation Review engagement. Within this accreditation review, our district was cited to having strength in our strategic resource management. Our goal is for our upcoming review to make sure this continues to be a strength for our district. In that conversation with building leaders, I shared with them our data from our most recent focus walk. If you notice with this specific data that I'm presenting to you, we visited 709 classrooms. Within that classroom, one of the essential components of our learning focus walk instrument is to look at the use of our district curriculum resources. During that walk, we're looking for strong knowledge and evidence of that resource. We're examining our lesson plans to see evidence of that resource, and if you note on this continuum, the evidence of practice is a 2.69 out of the three for the continuum. I shared with the building leaders that this information was not to judge, but to inform us of how we're going to make decisions moving forward. It was an opportunity to ask specific questions, which are, are we seeing a return on investment? Are the tools being used as intended with purpose and alignment? And most importantly, are they benefiting students? We're looking for impact, not just usage. To further define the parameters for the uses of our resources, we went back to our current technology acquisition process. Within that technology acquisition process, I included additional components for building leaders. In those components, I'm asking building leaders to describe when they're requesting supplemental resources. Do these resources that you request address any gaps that our core resource does not address? If it does, that means we need to go back to our core resource to do some additional digging. Along with that, building leaders are asked to provide evidence of practice for the specific resource. It needs to be evidence-based practices embedded within that resource that supports our instructional goals for our district, as well as their specific needs for their building. Once the building leader submits their request to renew the possible resource, they've been asked to submit effectiveness of that specific resource, to show how it has made an impact on student learning. If that evidence is not presented for that specific renewal, it will not be considered for renewal for our building for the upcoming year. To further define parameters for the expectation of how we monitor resources, I ask specific program managers to look into specific items that are commonly asked from the building, specifically product is maybe iXL, iReady. What I ask the math program manager to do is to provide me with strategic parameters, as Dr. Gibbons would say, define parameters, define autonomy, because we want to make sure the building leaders have flexibility in those resources, but we want to define how they should be used. Nancy Kelly, our program manager for math, specifically crafted this guidance that was provided to principals during our last meeting. Within this guidance, she noted that this specific resource should not replace the core resource during instructional time. She noted that this resource is used for remediation, it could be used in our math connections, or provided as an extension for homework, but it should not replace the core instructional material for the class, which is our SAVS resource or our McGraw-Reveal resource for elementary. Again, each program manager will continue to monitor, support, and train our coaches and leaders throughout the year for all of our core resources. This includes building leaders, our instructional coaches, our teachers, our digital learning specialists, to ensure consistent and high-quality use of our resources. Again, we're looking for impact. Our goal is, during our next or upcoming visit for Cognia, we hope on those specific standards that address the use of resource and impact, we hope to yield a score of a level three or higher, again honoring our commitment to bring a return on our community's investment with our resources. With that context in place, I will now begin presenting our first curriculum action item on behalf of our team. I will state, for all items that are funded through eSplos, I work directly with our business service team and our vendors to identify a deferred billing agreement for all of our specific resources that are funded through eSplos. This approach will help us manage our responsibilities and maintaining reflexivity for our instructional investment. First action item is ClassLink. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of ClassLink as an auto-rostering platform and student launchpad for learning resources totaling $57,945. This purchase is contained upon the approval of a contract by the superintendent and general counsel. ClassLink provides the ability to efficiently and securely access district learning resources for students, parents, and educators. ClassLink streamlines the login process through single sign-on, making navigating various learning resources easier for educators, students, parents, and ClassLink also provides analytics to track usage and student engagement. The financial impact for this specific resource is $57,945 funded through general funds. Well, funded source is general funds, I apologize. Next action item, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Renaissance Learning Star Assessment as a universal screener, universal reading and math screener totaling $237,875.76. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. Renaissance Learning Star Assessment measures reading comprehension, mathematics achievement levels for elementary, middle, and high school students. Assessment data will be used to inform instruction and differentiate intervention. Again, the financial impact is $237,875.76. Funding source is eSplos. The next action item, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Imagine Learning Edgenuity as a digital content platform for grades nine through 12 totaling $138,954.52. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by superintendent and general counsel. Edgenuity is an online learning solution that provides customizable curriculum for blended and personalized learning, unit standard recovery, and credit recovery. The financial impact, again, is $138,954.52. Funding source, eSplos. The next action item, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of NearPod as an innovative platform to integrate the current instructional resources to enhance teaching and learning experiences for all content areas totaling $94,086. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. NearPod will assist in forming instructional decisions, allowing teachers to pivot their teaching strategies in real time for elementary, middle, and high school students in all content areas. This resource will continue to help students, increase student engagement, and differentiate intervention. Again, the financial impact is $94,086. The funding source is eSplos. I'll release the mic to Vernalisa Printup, our Social Studies Coordinator, and I'm sure you will have plenty of questions, and we're eager to answer all of those questions towards the end.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet Members, and guests. I am Vernalisa Printup, and I am the K-12 Coordinator for Social Studies, and I do have two action items. First, I want to thank the board for letting us know that we are a part of the State Department of Education. I'm glad you're here. 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 And I do have two action items this evening, starting out with our K-5 adopted resource, the Studies Weekly Packaging. Effective June 2025, our current three-year contract and subscription with this vendor comes to an end. Studies Weekly is a proven effective resource that enhances students' knowledge of social studies while providing scaffolds for academic success. So, the action item. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Studies Weekly print and digital learning resources, the adopted resources for kindergarten through fifth grade social studies totaling $196,569.80. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. Our second action item and our final action item for this evening for Social Studies is the renewal of the U.S. History and Economics digital text from Savis. These resources give students an opportunity to learn through inquiry-driven best practices. Aligned with the Georgia Standards of Excellence and the College, Career, and Civic Life Framework, these texts focus on helping students develop critical thinking, problem-solving, and participatory skills to prepare them for college, career, and civic life. So, for the action item. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Savis's United States History and Economics, the adopted resources for those respective courses totaling $103,000. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract of the superintendent and the general counsel. We are pursuing a one-year renewal for this product respectively as the six-year term expires this year. And then we will revisit adopting a new resource or renewing this resource for an extended amount of time. I'm going to turn the floor over to my colleague, Ms. Heather Tolliver, who's going to tell you about Science Health and PE resources.
Thank you, Verna Lisa. Good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, board members, Superintendent Chesser, cabinet, and community members. McGraw-Hill is the currently approved core resource for science instruction in grades six through eight biology, physical science, and oceanography. And the subscription is set to expire in June 2025. We are only requesting a one-year renewal for school year '26 to prepare for a science resource review of middle school science resources. The action item is, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of McGraw-Hill science resources totaling $154,181.47. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel and will be funded by East Plus. Hawken Mifflin and Harcourt is the approved core resource for science instruction in K-5 science. And the subscription is set to expire in June 2025. We are requesting a three-year renewal for the digital subscription for students to have continued access to the resource. The action request is the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Hawken, Mifflin, Harcourt's science resources totaling $419,790.3. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel and will be funded by East Plus. I'm now going to speak to you about the health, the sex education, AIDS education resource adoption process, and then follow with the action request. Following is the timeline of the resource adoption process for the sex AIDS education resources for grades K-12. The adoption process took place from October 2024 to April of this year and involved review from the reestablished Health Advisory Committee and the public. In compliance with policy IFAA, the selection process began with a 30-day vendor solicitation in which vendors are required to complete a survey to confirm alignment to the Health GSE and Technology Guidelines. Top vendors were selected to present before the Health Advisory Committee. The Health Advisory Committee evaluated each vendor using a HQIM or High Quality Instructional Materials rubric to determine what vendors advanced to the public review stage of the adoption process. The HQIM rubric required resources to align with the Health GSE and applicable portions of the Health Education Curriculum Analysis Tool provided by the CDC. The top two vendors for elementary and secondary were selected to advance. The top two vendors selected for elementary were The Great Body Shop and Quaver Health and PE. The top two vendors for secondary were Choosing the Best and Glencoteen Health. The following are the results from each phase of the process. The average scores for the Health Advisory Committee are pictured in favor, Quaver Health and PE over Great Body Shop, 69.3, with a score of 69.3 to 61.1 respectively. Quaver Health and PE was also favored in the public review. Quaver Health and PE is a currently approved resource for other health concepts like alcohol and other drug education, nutrition, personal health, safety, mental health, and emotional health. After further vetting to ensure compliance with OCGA 20-2-143, and considering stakeholder input, the K-12 Health Advisory Committee comprised of students, parents, teachers, counselors, and community members recommends Quaver Health and PE as the resource for sex AIDS education for grades K-5. The action request, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt Quaver Health and PE for K-5 sex AIDS education. The recommendation is at no additional cost to the district. The average scores for the Health Advisory Committee for the secondary vendors are pictured and favored choosing the best over the Glencoteen Health resource with a score of 80.3 to 59.7 respectively. The public review slightly favored Glencoteen Health over choosing the best. Here's a strong evidence to support choosing the best as the better-aligned resource for sex AIDS education required by OCGA 20-2-143, specifically in the areas of emphasis of abstinence, peer pressure, and self-esteem, legal consequences of parenthood, and community values. All those stakeholders recommended McGraw-Hill and additional comparison of choosing the best in McGraw-Hill Health was conducted to evaluate both resources. After this review, the decision was made to follow the recommendation of the K-12 Advisory Committee, which includes students, parents, teachers, counselors, and community members. This decision was based on choosing the best, providing grade-level-specific content and age-appropriate content with scripted instruction for teachers, ensuring consistency and age-appropriate delivery. This adoption aligns with the requirements of the OCGA 20-2-143 and Regulation IFAAR instructional material selection and adoption. The action request is the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt and renew choosing the best for six-nine sex AIDS education totaling $22,396.96. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our next team of ELA members.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chairwoman Jones, board members, Ms. Chesser, our cabinet, and our guests. It gives me great pleasure to bring before you the action item for Imagine Learning Sunday System. For pre-K through grades five for renewal, the recommendation is that the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve Imagine Learning Sunday System resources The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. Imagine Learning Sunday System, the adopted pre-K through grade five ELA supplemental intervention resource, consists of learning resources for all literacy support staff and students. This includes pre-K, EIP, learning support, and ELL. The scope and sequence of the resource within the program suite are aligned to the new state legislation, House Bill 538, our Georgia Early Literacy Act, Senate Bill 48, our dyslexia law, and the new Georgia K-12 ELA standards, which will be implemented in the '25, '26 school year. They meet the expectations of the IDA, the International Dyslexia Association, in supporting students with characteristics of dyslexia. The recommendation for the purchase of a five-year subscription to Imagine Learning Sunday System with a financial impact of $624,551.64 from East Plus. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chairwoman Jones, board members, Superintendent Mrs. Chesser, cabinet members, community, and guests. Elementary literacy has one action item tonight. It is Benchmark Advanced, our core literacy resources. It is for our student consumables. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of Benchmark Advanced consumables totaling a total of $304,920. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. Benchmark Advanced, the K-5 adopted resource, consists of student consumables that play a crucial role in the instruction of the program by providing students with interactive and engaging materials that support learning. Benchmark Advanced consumables are an integral part of the program's success by making learning interactive, personalized, and consistent across all grade levels. It is recommended to purchase a five-year subscription of Benchmark Advanced K-5 consumables. The financial impact is $304,920, funded by East Plus.
Greetings, Chair Jackson Lett, board members, superintendent, our cabinet, guests, and our teaching and learning team. I am Dr. McCray. I have the pleasure of sharing with you some significant requests this evening on behalf of our sixth through 12th grade language and literacy team. As you all know, the last time that I was before you, we talked a little bit about the process that we were going through in terms of resources and standards. So today, I am here to speak on specifically the timeline, the updates, and what recommendation we have for you all to support our sixth through 12th grade courses. Before you is just an overview of the timeline that we adhere to in order to make sure that our stakeholders were involved in our process. More importantly, that we established a committee that went through training to ensure that they had the proper tools to go through the adoption process. So, we have efficiently and very thoroughly gone through our timeline, making sure that we opened it up to the public for review, calculated the data, and are going to share that with you very shortly. On this next slide, similar to our science team, we tried to make sure that we handle all business the same. And so, we went through a process of making sure that not only did we have a high-quality instructional rubric to evaluate the resources, but we took it a step further and solicited vendors and gave them an opportunity to submit interest in being a part of our adoption process, vendors that we currently partnered with and vendors that we did not. Through that process, we were able to partner with our technology department as well as our learning support division to craft a survey that would allow us to gather some information on the preliminary end in terms of compatibility with our learning support systems, just really to make sure that we were going to be able to make an informed decision. So, I'm proud to say that that went well. And through that process, you see the vendors before you that submitted a survey stating their interest in wanting to go through our resource adoption process. From that process, our committee began evaluating the resources provided by each of those vendors who came and spent some time in our county. I'm very, very excited. I know it's a small picture, but it should be a very impactful picture of the work and the time that our committee took to evaluate each instrument. What you see before you is the instrument that the committee used to be able to make their recommendations and narrow down the vendors so that we would be able to then go before our stakeholders. Our committee consisted of ESAR coaches, as well as instructional coaches, teachers, and leaders. They used the same survey that was going to be used by our stakeholders to make sure that the instrument would stay consistent. And so, we're very, very proud that we were able to maintain consistency across our measurements. We evaluated three sections of the products. Each resource was looked at in terms of text quality and complexity, as well as the building overall knowledge, and certainly, last but not least, the teacher supports that were provided. I'm going to pause here for just a second because these bar graphs can be misleading, especially if you don't understand the work that goes behind those numbers and what they mean. Because we wanted to make sure that we collected very valuable data, we collected data from our committee first. And what you see from our committee in terms of who they identified as the top three vendors included McGraw-Hill, Savis, and HMH. From our committee's data, we then opened it up to create a survey that would allow our stakeholders the same opportunity to evaluate the top three vendors out of the five that presented. Those top three vendors, again, were HMH, Into Literature, Study Sync, which is our McGraw-Hill product, and My Perspectives, which is Savis. And as it has been stated earlier, that is the current product that our teachers are using. Once we opened up the evaluation or the survey, the public review to our public, we collected that data. And we definitely looked at data from a middle school lens as well as a high school lens because we are adopting a resource for both grade bands. As you see the data before you, you'll note that there was a point difference. Some might say significant, some might say not so significant. But for us, in terms of trying to make a decision about what resource is going to make the most sense for our teachers and our students, as well as our stakeholders who are supporting those students, the difference matters, no matter how big or small. And with that point difference, it indicated that our stakeholders had a preference. And so, we continued to dig a little bit deeper. We went ahead and did a second round. And with that second round, we were able to request additional support from both vendors, which included videos. Because a lot of the information that was provided to our stakeholders was digital and required them to navigate the platforms on their own. So, we elevated our request again by asking for some videos to kind of talk through the product and allow people to see from a webinar-type of experience what that might look like. And once we collected that final round of data from our teachers and our leaders, we again identified a point difference. So, when you look at our middle school data and you look at our high school data, you can see that there is a difference. When we combine this data collectively and look at what's going to make sense comprehensively... You want me to go back, don't you? Okay. When we combine this data collectively and look at what will make sense for our students from grades six through eight, as well as nine through 12, we look at the data side by side. And when you look at the data side by side, you see that there's a clear frontrunner. The frontrunner, in terms of point value, is Savis My Perspectives. And so, with that, we are looking at financial impact. Again, because it was close, because it wasn't a significantly large number that separated those point values, we begin to analyze the differences in cost. The cost for each of those products are before you. And after we were able to compare the price, as well as leverage the stakeholder data, we are happy to make this recommendation. And it is for Savis My Perspectives. It is our recommendation that the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt and approve the purchase of Savis My Perspectives totaling $1,706,512.50. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. And I am going to share the rationale because I want to make sure that with the price tag of such that high, we also understand that this resource isn't just being selected because it's time for a new resource. It's being selected because it matches best with the new standards that are getting ready to be that are getting ready to be rolled out in our district. So our rationale is as follows. The 6th through 12th ELA Resource Adoption Committee comprised of educators from each of the district's schools recommends Savis My Perspectives as a secondary core resource. After additional vetting, review of stakeholder input, and comparing instructional resources to new state legislations such as Senate Bill 538 and House Bill 48, and the new Georgia K-12 English Language Arts Standards, it is recommended to purchase a six-year subscription of Savis My Perspectives. So what you see before you is the cost for middle school and for high school. This resource is both print and digital, and we're very excited to make the recommendation to you today. Now, I wish I could say I was done, but I am not. We have additional courses that need resources as we go into the new wave of new standards, as well as new courses that are going to be taught in not only middle school but high school that are advanced or accelerated courses under our new pathway. With that, it's also time to invest in those courses to support those students. So we continued the resource adoption process in the same way that we went about for the core resource, which would be used in our general ed English courses. We also comprised the committee of advanced placement instructors as well as teachers, as well as leaders, to weigh in on the product. Also provided our stakeholders with that same opportunity to look at the products from a digital lens. Here's the data that was collected. Again, we totaled it for points using the same rubric that we use for the core. And BFW stands for Bedford-Freeman-Worth, and then Pearson was the other publisher. The recommendation, after collecting the data, spending some time with the product and letting the AP teachers spend some time with the product, we're making the recommendation to move forward with the purchase by BFW, also known as Bedford-Freeman and Worth. This particular resource is going to provide us with both the pre-AP and the advanced placement courses. Again, the pre-AP courses are going to be new to our district, so we don't have an existing resource. This will be the first resource that we're purchasing to roll out with the new course. We will have pre-AP I and pre-AP II. And then we'll also continue with our advanced placement language and composition and our advanced placement literature and composition. These are the books that we're recommending. As you can see, it's a vertical teaming guide, and we truly, truly believe in the consistency that will allow our students to continue with the rigor as early as eighth grade through 12th grade. So here's our recommendation. We recommend that the superintendent, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt and approve the purchase of Bedford-Freeman and Worth, also known as BFW, totaling $103,833.07. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. I won't read this rationale to you because it is the same as the rationale for the other resources. It is time to make sure that we have resources that are going to align with the new standards that are being rolled out and to also support the new courses that are going to be offered as early as eighth grade for our accelerated students. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I just have a couple for clarification. I think I saw that all of these were coming out of East Plus except for one. Is that correct? Okay, and...
Mrs. Palmer, to clarify, I think the one you're talking about is the class link.
That's right.
And because it isn't an actual resource, it's not eligible under East Plus, that's why we're having to pay for that one out of general fund.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then on the Imagine Learning Sunday? Just clarification, is it a renewal or is that a purchase? It's a renewal. And then the last one is just, again, clarification. Standards change all the time. And when, so for the last two, I think you spoke of it was a six-year contracts. Do we feel confident that the standards are not going to change within that two, six years?
That is a great question. We are confident that the standards are not going to change. We've had the previous standards for 10-plus years. It was past time. It just kept getting pushed back with the math standards rollout and then some changes, obviously, with just the world and what was going on. So we are now in a space to have our ELA standards that we will have for a few years. Definitely the life of our adoption. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may, as far as the resources, I want to say thank you for getting the feedback of the stakeholders because they're the ones, they're the boots on the ground, right? Not talking about the song. But thank you. That is, that is important. That is important. I also want to say that throughout the presentation from everyone that presented, you mentioned several important implementations to promote student achievement. And I just want to say, because these are some of the things that we look for. As you all were presenting, you answered a lot of my questions very thorough, right? And I heard evidence-based practice, those of you who know, you know, you know, because the term used to be research-based. So now we're talking about practices that's been tested over and over again, and we know that they are beneficial. So that's great. Thanks for mentioning that. I also heard that you, you have a plan for ongoing monitoring of the impact of the resources on student achievement. Thank you. How do we know if it's working if we don't monitor the progress that the students are making, right? So that was great also. And then also, a few weeks ago, someone came into the, into a board meeting, and the gentleman said to us that he was very concerned that the use of technology was taking over our instructional practices, that we needed to find a way to find balance. And also heard that, that someone's going to monitor to make sure that there is balance with our instructional practices with the inclusion of technology. That is also very important. So you all made my heart smile today. Thank you all very much for such a thorough presentation, and thank you for your plan to monitor and monitor the progress of the practicing and also the effectiveness of the research. And thank you so much for including the stakeholders. That's invaluable. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Heather, Jessie? Claire? Thank you, ladies. Mr. Budenstich? Mrs. Rowland?
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, distinguished board members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet Members, and guests. My name is Renata Rowland. I'm the Director of Assessments for Rockdale County Public Schools, and I come before you this evening to share some Georgia milestone updates. Here in Rockdale County, we serve our students, and we want to ensure that our students are learning. We provide instruction. As you just heard, we have a litany of resources that we use to provide instructions for our students. And so we often ask ourselves the question in our PLCs, how will we know if our students have learned? Well, through that, we use the Balance System of Assessment. A Balance System of Assessment includes classroom formative assessments, other local practices, and state summative assessments like the Georgia Milestone as multiple measures to provide a full picture of each of our students' performances here in Rockdale County. During the school year, the students take local assessments administered through the SchoolNet platform. The Georgia Milestones are our state summative assessments required by the Georgia Department of Education to balance out this system. The Georgia Milestone Assessment consists of two different types of tests. The end-of-grade assessment is administered to students in grades three through eight, and the end-of-course assessment is administered to students in grades eight through 12. The Georgia Milestone Assessment System is designed to provide information about how well each student here in Rockdale County has mastered the grade-appropriate content standards in each of the four core content areas, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. The Georgia Milestone Assessment System is also designed to provide each student with the critical information about their own achievement and readiness for their next level of learning here in the K-12 system and beyond. The Georgia Milestone Assessment System is designed to inform parents, educators, and the community about how well students are learning important content. Results serve as a measure of the quality of educational opportunities provided throughout the state. Lastly, the Georgia Milestone Assessment System is designed to serve as a key component in the Georgia Department of Education's accountability system. This year, for the 2025 school year, our Georgia Milestone elementary students will take in grades three through five ELA in math and science. For ELA in math, and for our fifth graders, they take science. For our middle school students, they, this grade six, seventh, and eighth, they take ELA and math. And science is given to grades eight, and physical, physical science and regular science is given to grades eight, and social studies administered to grade eight as well. Lastly, for our high school students, we administer the end-of-course assessment to the American Literature and Composition, Algebra Concepts and Connections, Biology, and lastly, U.S. History. For the 2025 student participation, all students, including those receiving virtual instruction, are expected to participate in the Georgia Milestones in person this year. There is no option to test virtually. They are required to come on site. In accordance with CCRPI requirements, all schools and the entire school district must achieve a 95% participation rate that's required by the Georgia Department of Education. Other 2025 requirements for the ELC? A student's final grade in an ELC course will be determined by using a combination of the student's grade in the course, as stated by the course teacher, and their ELC score that they take from the exam. For the 2024-2025 school year, the Georgia Milestone ELC shall count for 10% of the student's final numeric grade in the course assessed by the Georgia Milestones ELC. Lastly, students must earn a 70% or higher as the final course grades to pass the course and earn course credit. What do we do here in Rockdale County to prepare for the Georgia Milestones Administration? We trained all of our leaders, principals and assistant principals, on March 12 at our IST meeting. Additionally, our testing coordinators received extra training on January 16, February 25, March 13, and April 2. RCPS staff members in all buildings will be trained by testing coordinators based upon the guidelines offered by the Georgia Department of Education. Only certified staff members will administer Georgia Milestone assessments. And each school is required to have a written plan to address any emergencies that may occur during testing. In addition, we also administered three practice sessions. Those practice sessions were important because it provides students the opportunity to practice using the DRC platform. It also provides the opportunity to test RCPS technology to ensure that the school bandwidth can handle the large number of students on the network at the same time and to ensure proper test submission. Additionally, specific plans were created to ensure virtual students are tested safely and securely when they actually come onto campus. We provide many opportunities for our students to practice. We had practice session dates on February 7, March 27, and we had a practice yesterday. And I will say to you that for all of the administrations, we had very minor issues, very, very, very minor issues. And I know, Janie, you're in DeKalb County. I heard about the challenges you guys had for the practice yesterday. I spent a lot of time with your superintendent, I mean, your director, and she... So any practice sessions offer schools the opportunity to practice under real conditions. Specific plans were created to ensure all students, including virtual students, are tested safely and securely. And during practice sessions, students with accommodations can practice using their documented accommodations. The parents can also assist their children in becoming familiar with the GMAS tools using the Georgia Experience online website. They have the opportunity to test at home on the Georgia Milestones Experience platform. Our spring administration schedule is as follows. We have our May administration from April 28 to May 9. We have our GMAS retest and our GMAS ELC schedule as you see before you. The EOG and the ELC summer administration schedule dates are before you with May 29 through, May 19 through 22. Students who do not pass the reading in math in grades three, five, and eight. And for the ELC, we have students that did not complete their ELC course prior to April 29. Score notification, scores are housed in DRC after all tests have been completed. The Georgia Department of Education verifies and approves the scores. Scores are embargoed until officially released by the Georgia Department of Education, and there is no official date for the release. We wait to receive notification of the release from the Georgia Department of Education when the scores are ready. With that being said, I do stand before you with an action item regarding our Balance System of Assessment. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education will approve the renewal of the SchoolNet Platform of Assessment Bank to provide formative assessments to the students of Rockdale County Public Schools in the amount of $124,436.61. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract of the superintendent and general counsel. The rationale for this? The district's 10-year access to the platform ended on June 30, 2022. Each year, we will need to renew the contract to have access to the platform and assessment bank. The SchoolNet Platform and assessment bank are used to administer assessments to students to ensure compliance with the Balance System of Assessment and the cycle for results. Assessment data will be used to inform instruction and differentiate interventions.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
First time.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a plan for, I want to say reteach, because no words. But is there a plan for tutoring or reteaching before they do take the reteach?
For the retest, yes. There is, there are initiatives that are rolled out through the schools that are pushed out through the Office of Accountability where they have to provide some support for those students.
Yes, if you don't mind, Ms. Rowland, Dr. Givens, will you or Dr. McLean speak up a little bit about that plan, please?
Good evening. We do have plans. Each of our schools, they begin to actually do those preparation plans beginning in January. And so we pretty much have identified case loads of students that we believe may need some additional support. And of course, we do have our case loads of students who require enrichment as well. And so we continue through testing, and so we really don't stop until we get those results. And once we get the results in, then we can pivot and see who may have been a surprise that we may need to add, or who are some folks that we can take away. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I spent all my money, so I'm broke. Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Ms. Jones, and Superintendent Chesser, and Board Members, I have a couple of action items tonight. The first one is the Flatshoals Elementary School Renovation Modifications Project. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Kevin Price Construction as a contractor choice for the Flatshoals Elementary School Renovation and Modifications Project. They provided the lowest bid, the amount of $7,302,900 at our April 10 bid opening at 2:00 p.m. This contract is contingent upon the superintendent's and general counsel's review and approval. The scope of work is the complete renovation of the school to include, but not limited to, painting, floor finishes, doors, cabinetry, ceilings, lights, doo-ha fire alarm system, emergency generator, major electrical upgrades, HVAC upgrades, and site improvements. And so we're just remodeling the whole thing. And as I shared with you in the past, when we had the contractors, excuse me, the architects approve, this is going to be in stages. Speaking with Mr. Stewart last week at this, that bid opening, our hope is to have the classroom segment of this renovation completed someplace, sometime in April, May next year. So our students and teachers are back in there in the main part of the building before we go into the summer, and then we'll finish up the cafeteria, media center, other office space in those buildings. The second one I have is for the sister project to this first one I mentioned. This is Barstool's. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Bowen and Watson as a contractor of choice for this project. They were the lowest bid at $6,974,000 at the April 15, 2:00 p.m. bidding. And again, the same scope is in place for the Barstool project. At Flatshoals, we are using a pod where we will use six classrooms... At Flatshoals, we are using a pod where we will use, uh, six classrooms, a pod, uh, to rotate through. Down at Barksdale, we've moved in some additional, uh, mobile units, and we will use those to process through. And Mr. Stewart has been in touch with our administrative staff to make sure that this project, these projects go smoothly. And we anticipate getting that, those upgrades done at these two schools. The third action item I have is the, uh, Facilities Softball Scoreboards Project. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of the Iconics for the softball scoreboard installation project. The purchase of all seven boards and installation of five of them will be $83,556, purchasing through Omni Parts Contract Number R220601. Subcontractors will install the Memorial and Salem High School boards due to timeframe, trying to get these installed prior to the softball season. Uh, the scope of the project is to replace each building and high school softball scoreboard. These are LED, providing energy efficiency, longer life components, and reflect current standards. These boards are part of our ESPOSH projects. Uh, the intended installation completion date is scheduled for before the fall season sports begin. Those are my action items. Any question on those before I go? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
The parking, what can we do about parking?
So there, there's going to be some re- uh, renovation of those parking areas. And now you're landlocked at Flatshoals, and with the construction going on with our new bypass over I-20, it's just going to add congestion there, which we have talked with, uh, RDOT and GDOT about why they're not widening Flatshoals Road and providing. So they're giving us a, uh, extra long turning lane into there. But we have some modifications going on on this parking lot, and we refurbished those and redo them to the maximum capacity. So there's some work there. Barksdale is going to be dependent upon what happens with the old Ogusby Bridge Road. That's a two-lane street, uh, two-lane road, county road, but it's only actually one lane wide. So there's some issues there to change that. Uh, we got to leave plenty of queue space for our parents. Bust, the bus queue is fine. Any other questions? Just give you a little update. Uh, you approved the roofing project at Magnet some time back. Uh, you can see on the right side there, the blue tarps. That was a, um, shingle roof. We are going back with tin roof. And, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to, uh, get that accomplished while they've already started putting the tin on now, uh, when this taken, uh, last week. The other part is over the old kitchen area, and that's the old foam roof, same roof we have up in, uh, at Epic. And that roof has been completed to, or used, uh, tin roofing when we could, uh, sheet metal on the sides there. But, uh, just want to give you an update on those two projects, and, and they're running fine. That concludes my presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, remaining board members, Superintendent Chesser, cabinet, guests, and staff. Tonight, I'll be bringing the preliminary financial reports for the month of March. Seems kind of late to be doing this, but then, um, revenues for the month of March were 11.6 million. Year-to-date, we were at 186.6 million, and that represents 85.5% of our budget. Revenues this time last year, we were at 10.4 million, um, and 168.9 year-to-date, representing 84.5% of our budget. Expenditures for the month of March are 18.5 million. Year-to-date, we're at 162.4, representing 73.2% of our budget. Last year this time, we were at 17.4 for the month, 156.8 year-to-date, and that was 76.5% of our budget. The encumbrances for the month of March are $1,478,579. Our fund balance is $52,812,600. And last year, we had a fund balance at $48,380,943. On our balance sheet, our assets are $56,103,614. Our liabilities are $3,291, excuse me, $91,608. And again, our fund balance is $52,812,600. Um, before I conclude, Ms. Chesser wanted me to give you a little bit about our budget, a little update on our budget. Um, unfortunately, I don't have a lot of good news, or I shouldn't say good news, I don't have a lot of changes to talk about. Um, we are still waiting on confirmed numbers, but we, um, anticipate an additional $3.8 million over last year for QBE. Um, those are very preliminary numbers. We're still waiting for the governor to sign off on the budget. Um, so that's a good news. Um, and right now, we're still looking for local numbers. What we've gotten so far, um, have been numbers without the increased exemptions related to House Bill 581. So that's going to be, uh, we anticipate that that'll be a little larger, of course. Um, so we're not sure about those numbers just yet. And the only other good thing that I might have to say is hopefully, the, the governor approves the $15.3 million that they ended up on, on the poverty. It started at 28 million, the Senate zeroed it out, and then it decided at 15.3. So we're praying that he, um, approves that so we can have a little bit of that pot piece of the pot. That concludes my presentation. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. And I'll just add, while Joyce is talking about that board, that I just, um, returned from the GSSA Bootstrap Conference, and definitely, the budget was a top conversation, a top topic of conversation. And so they did talk about that poverty, um, allotment. We don't know exactly what that calculation is going to look like yet, so Joyce is anxious to get that information, as am I. Um, they talked about the overall budget for the state of Georgia with education comprising about 35% of the overall budget that was set. But definitely, some additional priorities, safety. We know that safety remains a priority, and they talked a little bit about the aftermath of what happened in Winder Barrow. And so they definitely wanted to earmark funds and legislative acts, um, based on, um, that tragic event that occurred. We do know that there is a Distraction-Free Education Act law that was passed, and that prohibits the use of personal devices, uh, for our students in kindergarten through eighth grade. And so our current Code of Conduct Board does have, um, listings in there prohibiting that, but we do need to go back and revisit that to make sure that we incorporate all of the pieces that are included in that particular act. We did hear good news, Joyce. They are fully funding QBE, and I think you talked about that a little bit, too. But definitely, we want to know how that additional poverty allotment may positively affect our budget. There are some additional funds that have been earmarked by the state for literacy. I don't know that we will receive any of that money directly here in the district, but we do know that that goes to support the literacy initiatives that are occurring. Um, Dr. Givens did share with us earlier that, um, our two TSI schools, that CJ Hicks and JH House, received some additional monies. I think we got that earlier this week. $64,000. Joyce is nodding her head, so half of that will go to support the needs at CJ Hicks. The other half will go over to support the TSI requirements and the needs over at JH House Elementary. So I, I'll just conclude by saying I'm keeping my remarks short today because I wanted to yield my time to our earlier presentation. So Madam Chair, I thought that was a fantastic idea. It was great seeing so many of our employees here, our alumni, um, that were here and our, now employees. So thank you for that wonderful idea, and we'll look to continue to do great things like that in the future. Thank you. Um, just one additional announcement. I know, Mr. Kellecheck, you talked about your ice cream social, and I know I definitely plan to come and at least get my scoop before our board meeting next Thursday. But on that same night, we also do have our Empty Bowls Dinner at General Davis Middle, General Ray Davis Middle School. So Ms. Jackson Lett and I, on Tuesday, went and met Superintendent Woods over at General Ray Davis Middle School to make our bowl. So we are appreciative of our state superintendent coming out to not only make the bowl, but to continue his support of the, the arts in public education. So we were glad to spend that time with him and for our students to be able to interact with him. But again, the overall goal is that fundraiser that I know Ms. Katie King has spearheaded for many years, and that is definitely a great community service project in giving back to, um, our local community. So next Friday, that is, from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M., so well, next Thursday, excuse me. We have, uh, Mr. Kellecheck's event, the, um, Empty Bowls Dinner, and then also our regular session on Thursday as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. The cabinet has provided numerous presentations on information. I would like to ask the board members to please review the information. We do not need a recess. Anybody need a recess? No recess, thank you. Please review the March 2025 Board Minutes and pro- any, provide any edits to Enkri. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. Is there old business and new business? Okay? The cabinets have provided an overview of action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items to be placed on a consent agenda?
Um, I move that we, um, place items 1 through 19 on a sent agenda for, um...
Consent agenda?
Yes, consent agenda.
Is it a second? A motion to consider the action item under a consent agenda at the regular session has been made by Ms. Akita Palmer and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved 6-0. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and pending litigation? A motion to go into executive session by Ms. Janie Jones and a second by Ms. Akita Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? There's a 6-0 vote. The time is now 8:22, and the board will go into executive session.
Y'all don't change that.